Hey Amanda. Your background has changed.
Yeah, I wasn't planning on having a meeting today, so I'm yeah. I'm in my dad's office because I'm home for Thanksgiving, so.
Well, we have family here, so you may hear interruptions of loud barking because the dogs outraged. Or multiple children.
Same, we have my dog, my parents, two dogs who don't get along, so there's like a level of chaos. My niece may make an appearance at some point.
Yeah, I told the kids, I was like, you can't be here right now because Willow's still not used to edicts and Toby yet, and she's not happy or quiet, so.
Poor Willow.
She'll be all right. She'll be all right. She made friends with Chelsea last week. That was great.
That's important. New friends.
Yeah, it was good for her. She struggles with people sometimes.
Nova has the opposite problem. She loves people a little too much, but she has a hard time with other dogs.
Oh, yeah, that's so my my in-laws were visiting. That's their dog's issue. So that's the other reason Willow's kind of a basket face. Because there's a dog over there who is unhappy.
We have to take off Nova's collar because it jingles and that gets the other dogs all worked up. They don't care if they can hear her like nails tapping on the floor like her barking, but her collar for whatever reason.
That's so funny. You're gonna sit right here. You're like, Mom, what is happening? This was five o'clock, right? I thought I was late, so delighted that I'm not the last one on.
Is this the same rule like in college? You give it five minutes, 10 minutes? There's some childhood photos of me if people are.
Behind you.
Yeah.
Nice.
This one here, this wooden one, it's really.
Oh, yeah, I can't really make them out.
Yeah, that one's a little one of me. This one over here, yeah, there's a bunch of them.
Nice.
This one here. A little Easter egg for the recording.
All the people attending this public meeting, yeah. Are you staying the whole week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the traffic is always so terrible coming down for Thanksgiving, so.
Oh, yeah.
Alternate years and this time we were like, you know what? We haven't been able to do anything, but everybody is like vaccinated and boosted and all of that good stuff. So we were like, all right, let's go for the whole week.
Yeah, we are making good use of rapid tests and all the children have had their first dose at least, so that's helpful.
Yeah.
But Aurelius class just went on quarantines today, so we'll probably be getting that email soon, I would imagine. Yeah, I got a call from Chelsea midday and I was like, I think I need to take this probably right now. Like, hold on, students, I'll be right back. Yeah. So that stinks, but at least they don't actually have to be. You know, it's only two and a half days that they're actually remote, so.
Not bad.
No.
My skin tone looks so weird. It's this, I think it's this purple monitor that my dad has set up. Turn it off. How to turn it off? There we are. Looks a little better. He has like one, but it's like my purple background. This is like gloves. Like, I kind of look a little sickly. Turn this off, too. It's got like a crazy setup.
I've been thinking after being, so last year I had our desktop computer that I would take most of my meetings from because even though it was really slow, it was huge. And it made me want to buy a monitor for my laptop. So now you got very dark.
Yeah, but like a little less of like a ghoulish glow which is happening to me.
It's very appropriate. Oh, there's another one.
We don't know where anyone is, Manny. Oh, he's not connected.
Oh, Manny brought Ivy. Hello.
Hey, friends. Ivy, you say hi to daddy's.
Ivy.
Huh? Yeah. Look at it. It's Kristen. You know, you landed that away.
Willow's like, is it show and tell time?
You see Amanda? She bought you the bilingual book. Yeah, yeah. And that's a dog. Look at the dog. Oh, my goodness.
She's like, can I always sit perched in your lap like this?
She comes to all my board meetings. She's a, she's my frequent passenger.
Yeah.
Oh, do you want to show Amanda and Kristen what you learned this week?
Oh.
Come on, Ivy, you want to clap? Clap, clap, clap.
She's like not on demand now.
Ah, okay.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, that was the dog. It's gone. He was waiting for you to clap. Oh, you want to come? All right, that's cool. I understand. All right, I'm gonna do the transfer.
Hey, okay, I'm on. Yay.
We don't know where everyone else is.
It's just us. It's been me and Kristen for like 10 minutes.
I couldn't log on. If you go to the link that I think was on my calendar, it's kept saying.
Oh, I went through my email.
Host has another meeting in progress, so.
They deleted some of them and then we got a fresh link, but.
Why here the dogs?
So we're missing everybody else. One, two, three, four, Mary, Anna, and Jim. Let me, let me call them really quick, see if I can find out what's going on.
Hi, y'all. I am troubleshooting with Mary Manning right now. We're trying to get her in here.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jensen. And then do we know about the other two by any chance?
I do not.
Okay, all right. I'll check in with those guys. I just tried to text Jim and Anna, and then I know it sounds like that we're working with Mary, so you guys can sit tight for another minute and then we'll get going. Okay.
I've got a wall of childhood photos behind me. If people would like to see me from second grade, I can do a show and tell here.
I want to do a show and tell.
Are you in your parents' basement? Because I don't see Mike about to.
No, I'm in my dad's home office.
All right, nice.
I'm up for show and tell as long as there's stories associated with the photos.
I mean, in my second grade one, I told the photographer it was totally fine to get the laser light background, and it was not totally fine to get the laser light background.
Extra money.
Woo, yep.
Only the coolest people got the laser light background.
I'll bring you a photo.
Hey, Mary.
Hi. I'm having a little trouble. Jesus.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I also cut my bang in this photo. My mom was really overall quite thrilled.
She did that.
Everybody said one day you wouldn't want to show that to anybody, and yet here you are.
They were they wrong voluntarily putting that into the recording for everyone.
Okay, so I don't know about Anna and Jim, but I did text them. So if they're having difficulties, we will find that out. But I'd suggest in the interest of time, I have a six o'clock, so just want to keep us on schedule that we that we get rocking and rolling. So I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. And acknowledge that we are meeting remotely and that anybody who is interested in joining us may do so by logging on and the appropriate location on the school committee's calendar. Sorry, as I try and pull that in. May may do so by logging in or calling in. We have several different ways for folks to join us. And if you go to Salem.com, you will find the links to the associated ways to to join tonight's committee of the whole meeting. And at this point on our agenda, I would go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I think our number one issue today is discussing the timeline and the plan for the evaluation of superintendent's Reich. That is normally a task that is primarily handled by the vice chair. So thank you, Ms. Manning, for taking the lead on getting that stuff, this this process rolling. And I guess I would just also add that we are expecting to receive a key part of this process is the self-evaluation the superintendent does with respect to where he is at, how he evaluates himself with respect to the goals that were set, and we're anticipating getting that at our December 6th school committee meeting. So maybe beforehand, but the idea would be we'd have it certainly by then, and he would be going over his self-evaluation, which I think are important insights for us to consider as we move through our process. And with that, Ms. Manning, perhaps I could turn it over to you if you wanted to just walk folks through your expected timeline.
Um, yeah, you know, I'm really under under the eight ball here. I could barely hear you, and it's transcribing it for some reason, but it it isn't transcribing very accurately. And I have no idea. I tried Zoom. I mean, I tried Gmail. Jensen's been trying to help me. So I'm on the phone. I really can hardly hear, and I don't have any of the documents in front of me that I had already to look at on my computer. So I guess this is I don't know if this is going to work for me running this. I don't know if I can maybe toss it back to you, at least till I try to figure out how to hear people.
Yeah.
Because right now I'm reading what you're saying.
Okay, so.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, that's that's perfectly okay. Why don't I suggest I'll just give a quick overview of what we anticipate the process being? And then if this isn't the right timeline, we can schedule another time, maybe before our meeting on the sixth, to go over what we're going to go over today.
Yeah, the other thing is he did send me his goals that he that he gets that last year. And I think I followed those. Did I follow those to everybody?
You did, yeah.
Say that one?
You did, yeah.
You did, okay, all right. Okay, so we maybe could take a quick look at those two if we have time. But before we before we begin this process, one transgression or just a little change for a minute. I met, oh, I phoned with Jeff Parotti for a while this afternoon, who's the person who's coming in next week to talk about the work going on about the LGBTQ, etc. And he asked if I would give all of you, which I'll do later tonight, his address, his phone, his texts, those kinds of things, so that if there's any he wants, any, he wants you to know that any issues that you want him to like make sure he includes or covers or touches upon that he'd welcome any input you give so that he can make sure that he's including what you're specifically looking for or a topic in his presentation on the sixth. And then he'll he'll meet with us, the latter end of that cow, and then come back and during the regular meeting to present with, hopefully with Molly Robinson and, you know, and Steve, but when I give you his stuff tonight, just. Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I think, thank you for that, Mary. So we'll plan to hear more on the sixth about that meeting with respect to bringing on board the consultant that's helping us and anything you need from us in advance, I guess. We know he's scheduled for that meeting. So maybe we could just run through the process. The expected goals that the superintendent provided previously to us. Mary has reforwarded them, so everybody should have the goals. Those will be our work with respect to the self-evaluation. And traditionally, we've used a form that lays out if you feel the superintendent is proficient or not proficient in meeting those goals, and then a brief summary as to why. We will all need to complete that that process with our own evaluation. Those are then provided to Ms. Manning as the vice chair, who will take all of our self evals and come up with one sort of uniform evaluation that takes into takes into play all of what we've provided to her to try and do a summary of that. My suggestion would be that we would wait at least until the meeting on the sixth before we return those in or complete that process. Because I think we'd want to hear what the superintendent has to say for his evidence of meeting his goals and, you know, actions that that he has taken before trying to divvy up a a evaluation on our own. And so my expectation is we should get a form. If we can certainly make sure if we have not forwarded that already that that happens, and then we'll need to set sort of a timeline. When is it going to come back to Ms. Manning? So she has time to do the summary and we can report out. Some housekeeping, all of the evaluations are a public record individually. When we report out, it will be a summary. That's usually the thing that most people refer to, and we have to do that at a public meeting. So I think we did run into some confusion around what's allowed in executive session and what's not. All of the evaluations need to happen in in public session. So additional thoughts, questions, or concerns that anybody might have about the process? Okay. Mary, is there additional information you want folks to have?
Well, I I thought we should just briefly, I was planning to just briefly sort of review the rubric. Just Jensen's prepared, I think, to put it up on the screen and just just have us glance through it to make sure that we don't have questions. Because it's been a while. It seems to me it's been a while. I'm not sure we did a a formal one of these. I don't remember last year.
Been two years, Mary.
Yeah. The last one Margarita, maybe Kathy, but if we did, we didn't do, did we do Kathy? I don't remember.
We chalked it up to an unusual year for us.
Yeah, I haven't done one.
Yep, yeah, sorry.
We did not do one for Kathy.
Yeah, I didn't think so. So really, we go back to Margarita. So I thought we, it might benefit us if we just look at that before we head off to.
Sure. Is that something?
Start the process.
That rubric that you could pull up onto a screen share? Perfect.
I do. There are two. There's one that looks like it's a final version, and it's from July of 2019. And then there's also one listed on the DUCY website. It's a 2019-2020 draft rubric. Is there one that's preferred? Is there? Do you want to take a look at both?
Um, I'd say that the DUCY one probably makes the most sense because it's, I think what we used was, I mean, there, I'm sure they're very similar, so I'll say that, but maybe we can just start with the DUCY one.
Sure.
Um, could could somebody text Anna and say, yes, there's a meeting in progress? She's asking if there's a cow in progress. And I have the phone going and the screen going. I'm afraid if I text her, I'll lose it, lose everything.
I have her on. She's asking me the same thing.
Thanks.
I'll try and shoot her the link.
So Jen, maybe, I'm, I was thinking maybe if we like stopped on each page so folks could just see what's on the page, like if you go, just go back to the beginning for a minute and just let let us sort of read the head, the headings.
Sure.
And then if people have a question about any of it, we can stop, and then otherwise we'll say, okay, let's go to the next one.
Okay. Kim, I forwarded Anna my link, my email, so she checks her email.
Okay.
That should work.
All right.
Okay.
So is everybody okay with this one?
I mean, guys, I'm actually familiar with this because I've I've probably done it more times than than everyone else. So if anybody else has questions, please let me know and we'll we'll try and make sure. There's some pretty good, if you go to the MASC if you go to the MASC website, they've got some tools there as well that can kind of sort of help think through approaches, but it's it's fairly self-explanatory. I think it's more for us the timing, right? Steve gives his self eval on the sixth. We'll have a chance to hear him, plus whatever additional thoughts we have, our own, obviously reflections on our work with him, and then we need to follow the rubric to put in place whether we think you know, he met these goals, and if so, where, and if not, if so, how, and if not, why? And or just a summary of how you're how you're coming up with your standard. And then those get, as I said, summarized into one document.
So is everybody okay with this page? Can we move on?
Yep.
I don't have too many questions on it. I, you know, Manny and I also have the benefit of doing it before, so I think it's just a question of if Dr. Pangallo has questions. I mean, I get evaluated on this rubric, so I know it really well. But I don't think we're at the rubric part yet, so I think maybe I don't want to speak for Dr. Pangallo, but at least if she could see what the rubric itself looks like, and I agree, it's pretty self-explanatory. I don't think you'll have too many questions once you see it.
I am downloading it to make sure I have a copy that I can look at. So just it's just a little slow, but there it is. All right. I guess my question would be, how do we, how do we use the goals that were set forth by Doctors Reich for the past year in addition to this rubric? Do they map on to the rubric in some way, or do we just use those as the things we're really evaluating, or do we really focus on this rubric?
It's, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kim.
I was just going to say it's based on the goals, right? So there may be some things in this rubric that we didn't choose to align for goals. There have been years we did more professional development. There's been years we've done more student engagement, so you really have to cue it off of what those goals are. And feel free to weigh in, Amanda, if you've got other ways to.
I was just going to say it's almost like if you think about them as two connected but separate pieces, you have the rubric that all district administrators are evaluated on, and then you have a student learning goal and a professional practice goal that you're also evaluated on, and there's space in the rubric to show both. And so they're connected, and so there may be some overlap, but not every goal will necessarily map on to it because you have goals and you have the of indicators and standards as well.
Okay.
So there's, there's enough crossfit that it that it works. It looks like at the beginning like, whoa, you know, but it does, it does fit and work together pretty much.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I don't have any big questions other than that. We have the goals. We have this rubric. I'm not doing it all alone, so I know I will have people to ask if I have more questions.
All right, so if we just go through the rest of this sort of introductory stuff and make sure, and then like, I think basically Kristen, you're saying we can sort of look over this on our own, correct?
I'm comfortable doing that, yes.
Anybody not comfortable doing that? All right. So Kim, are you still there?
I am, yep.
So do you think like, this is really bad. Do you think we can maybe just flip to look at a little bit of a timeline rather than going through all of this? I mean, if folks are comfortable with it and Kristen is. Rather than going through all of this? I mean, if folks are, are comfortable with it and Kristen is downloaded, it's gonna go through it. It, rather than drag through the next twenty-five, I think, I think there are twenty-seven pages total and we've done two, so. Time-wise, if we're comfortable, we could, we could. Fly by this and go into times. Does that, does that make sense?
Uh, uh, Mary, can you hear me? Uh, I'm trying to get in through my computer. I have you right now through my cellphone.
Me too.
I can, are you also on your cellphone? For some reason, my uh. Well, I get the message on the computer, the host has another meeting in progress and I can't get in. But I haven't been receiving any messages at all for about four or five days.
No.
Uh, and so I wrote Jensen about that. So I wondered, the reason it's important for me to see it on the. Computer is that it's so tiny on the phone, but I, I did hear what Kristen said, and I think I definitely can use. Uh, can work with the rubric and um, and as well as the goals that Doctor Zrak set up for himself to, to do a good job on this. So.
Okay, so you're saying you're fine as long as we establish some timelines?
Yes.
Right? The, okay. You don't need to go over any of the other stuff tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Ma- Ms. Nuncio, I think the, the tech issue that you named is similar to the one that the mayor used uh, or had. If you're uh, trying to open up your Zoom via the calendar hold. Versus the panelist link in your email, that might be the source of the problem on the computer.
Uh, no, I did try. Um, after Kim sent me the email, I um, or the uh, text, I did try the email that Jensen had sent way back. And um, and then I tried to get into the email as well, but it, it says, um, the host has another meeting in progress. That's the message.
I just forwarded you my link that worked, so you could try that one.
On the email.
Yeah.
Oh, can you send, can you send one to me at G, at my Gmail?
Something is wrong with Mary's Outlook account and her, her Gmail wasn't forwarding the panelist link. Um, so I'm gonna talk with Matt Killen tomorrow about both of their accounts, cause it seems like there's missing emails going through and just see if there's something interesting to be discussed.
You want me to send it directly to your Gmail account, Mary?
Try it, yeah.
I'll try it.
Please. I mean, Jen tried it, but maybe if you just something to, send something that worked for you.
Yeah, I'll give that a shot. Why not?
Kristin, I still don't see it on my email account for school committee, but you can send it to my Gmail account as well, if, if easier. There.
Yeah, uh.
Still see it still.
Anna, I don't have a Gmail for you.
Okay, I'll send it to you by text.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, let's just start working off a timeline. I think to, for the most part, I think these um. The rubric and the evaluation process is fairly straightforward. I think if anybody has questions, Mary can certainly be a resource. Amanda, I can, if you're doing it for the first time. I'm happy to be helpful, but I, I think it's really straightforward. Maybe we should just uh, jump to dates. I know we're all trying to uh, to weigh in here, but. Let's um. Let's see where we.
Wow.
You okay?
Hey.
Hey, hi everybody. Hi everybody. Hi everybody.
Why is that happening?
Only when there's two of you, you know?
Whatever Kristen sent worked.
Yeah, you're now Dr. Pangallo.
Yeah, right.
You, well, you're appearing as Dr. Pangallo, so now you're not uh, Mary Manning anymore.
Be scary with Dr. Pangallo.
Is that considered identity theft?
I don't know. Poor, poor Dr. Pangallo. There we are.
I don't think it's theft if I emailed it to her.
Well, that's better. I don't know what the hell you did, but thank you.
All right, all is right with the world, almost. All right, so December sixth, we have our meeting, I believe. Uh, I've got that date right. Yeah, we've got a school committee meeting. So Doctors Reich, I think, is planning on uh, providing his self-evaluation information at that meeting. So we'll have a chance to hear from him as to where he thinks he met his goals, where he thought he may, he may have been short, you know, whatever his um, his reflections are. Um, from when the goal started till now. And I guess what's a reasonable timeline after that for us to get our rubric, the forms back to Mary uh, in a, in a way that's completed? Is a week at a time?
Because he also, I don't, I just don't wanna forget this. I mean, I, he, he also talked, I, I had talked to him too about when. We, we might be looking for some uh. Some forward-looking goals from him.
Yep.
All right, so, so there were sort of two things and. Um. Somehow he, we would be. Following up with given, with like, okaying those goals, but we also at that meeting might have goals that we wanna present. Um. I know in the past, a couple of times, there have been things that we've brought up, we want folks to, to work on. That wasn't self-initiated by them. So that could, that should also, I think, take place at that meeting. So it's not um. It, you know, it's not put off till after the, the new year and you know, we move along into another month and stuff before we say what we, what we might be looking for. I don't know if that makes sense to people.
Yeah, I mean, generally, we wanna get through the evaluation and then we begin the joint goal-setting process. Remember, these goals. While they're, they're the superintendent's, they're also ours. We jointly agreed to these set of goals. And so. It's not as though they're, they're just uniformly his. I think at the sixth, if he's gonna present out. What he, his reflections on, you know, on how he. Performed in meeting those goals, we're gonna listen to that. Are we gonna be ready at that same time to then posit additional goals uh, for, you know, the upcoming year? Um, some of it.
We, we, we probably wouldn't be, but I wanna get that out on the table, that that's part of the process we have to have a timeline for.
Right, okay.
When we're gonna.
Gotcha. So I think one of the, if we present it on the sixth, can people get their rubrics back to you by the thirteenth in terms of their own reflections? Um. With res- with respect to uh, you know, where we. Where we feel, cause you're gonna need some time to take all those documents, Mary, and then.
Yep.
Summarize them, and hopefully that would be in time for our meeting on the twentieth.
The twentieth, yeah.
Right? So that means on the twentieth, you will have received everyone's rubrics, had a chance to summarize, and maybe. On that day, I don't know if we wanna start the process that same night with saying, we, we really need a separate meeting, in my opinion, to try and do that during a regular business meeting. Maybe difficult, right? Um, so we could then schedule a cow for, hey, what are your goals? What are our goals? How do we, how do we derive some joint goals?
Looking forward.
Yep. And I think he was uh, the superintendent, we, at least in our conversations, we're talking about. Having a retreat or a strategic planning session in January, so that might be a good time to sort of map out some new goals. That we may have on our mind, things that he has on his mind. Uh, and then how do you get those crystallized? Their ideas that then need to get crystallized into a goal that has um, inability to be measured, right?
So, so can somebody just refresh my memory? Because. I thought at some point, there was. There was like an um, an, an evaluation like in the middle of the process, like there wasn't just. Feedback one time and that took the whole cycle. Isn't there a, sort of a, what am I trying to say? Like a mid-year or a mid-cycle? Um, information that we give? Did we like, just not do that, cause we were in COVID or, or am I dreaming of that of another life? I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, Mary, I don't, I don't recall a mid-year. Um, I think.
Yeah, maybe it's not really the term, but um, something before the final one.
I think we had talked about doing a check-in, given the context at the time regarding like a different set of issues. Um, and goals and trying to track improvement um, based on some professional development or uh, critical feedback we were providing. But I don't think that we had a formal process for that. So um, yeah, Mary.
So that, that doesn't apply to anybody would do, and that was situation-specific.
Situation-specific, and I, I don't think it applied to this particular um, overall process.
Because I know like. When you, when everybody else gets done, I mean, there were steps along the way. They get, they get feedback at in intermittent times during the year. You know, they don't just get this one evaluation at the end.
That's just for teacher feedback. It's totally different for district administrators. So I think you're thinking about the teacher feedback as a, as a building leader, certain.
No, I, I know I am. I know I am, but I thought that it was also. Um, I thought that it, it went beyond that level in, in some form. I am thinking of the teacher feedback, definitely, cause that's, that was, you know, the bane of my existence, but I just know that. I, I thought I remembered like myself getting some like in, in middle-of-the-road feedback and stuffing, but. Uh, you know, like I said, I could be dreaming of another life, so there's, if there's nothing, I'm fine. And the, I, I just wanted to make sure.
So we'll send all of our feedback to Mary on the thirteenth, by the thirteenth. Is that? We're all on board with that?
That's a week. Yeah, that would be a week, and I think it would be helpful if we all use the same form. Um, so we need to make sure everyone has that rubric form.
Yeah, I, I, I have that from previous time doing this, so I think I can get that out to everybody.
Right. So if we get that out by the third, uh, by the, the sixth, we'll hear from, you can get those out whenever, Mary, the sooner the better, right? The sixth, we'll hear from Steve on his own sort of reflections. Our goal will be to have our summaries back to you by the thirteenth. So that you can put together the summation in time for the twentieth. And then we will be sort of completed with our, our evaluation process, so to speak. And then I think our next work is identifying what are the joint goals we wanna work on uh, for the next round, the neck, the, the following year.
Yep. And just, just again. Bring me back to. Presentation of the overall of the final. Uh, form. That is presented initially at the public meeting on the twentieth.
Yes, if, if that works for you, that's, that would be. I mean, it's quick.
Yeah, no, I, no, I think I can do that, but I just, I'm trying to remember. There were no meetings bef, like before it was public, there wasn't like a meeting where we reviewed it before or anything, just.
No, I mean, you can certainly call individual members one-on-one if you would need clarification on something they indicated or.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, but, but we don't, we don't present it at all to him before that. It's, he, he is it for the first time at that meeting.
I mean, I think generally, as I said, it's a public document. Once it's done, if you finish it up on Friday, you can send it to him, so. There's no, got your surprise. You're gonna review it on the twentieth with all of us.
Okay.
And I, I will say, I have always sent the superintendent's my copy. So like, here's my rubric. I want you to see, you know, my thoughts. Um, and I think, I don't know, I think many of us have done that, so they can individually see it.
Um, yeah.
So.
Okay, all right. That, that, that works for me. How about everybody else?
That works for me.
Me too.
Okay, the sixth and the thirteenth, and I think, Mary, rather than get into the dates for the um, for the new process. Let's figure out that strategic planning session, it might be worthwhile for us to use that as a joint goal-setting timeline.
Yep, that works for me. That's the twenty-second, I think. So that's this time, that's plenty of time.
Okay.
All right, um, and I couldn't tell the conversation that being, did anyone hear from Jim?
Jim uh, texted me back to say he's not gonna be able to um, to make it tonight.
Okay.
And wanted to extend uh, Thanksgiving well wishes to the committee, so.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a good idea. Well, wishes to everybody for you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well.
And all right.
Mr. Cruz, something else?
Thanks, Mayor. And if, if we could, I just wanna make this flag, uh, given uh, the experience with the previous um, evaluation process. And just noting that I think we all realize the evaluation has uh, contractual obligations with the superintendent. Uh, we're here too. Um, I think one time uh, we, we were out of contract for a period of time, so. Just uh, I know that it's a four-year contract, but just thinking through, you know, at what point do we start uh, putting stakes on the ground with respect to the contractual process? Um, given that last, that last year will follow uh, next school year. Um, so just wanna uh, get ahead of that conversation as we continue to go through this eval process, but then the next one, just putting the flag of. You know, we should really be thinking about um, that long-term contract and um, not, not operating outside of it again, so that we can um. And I think secure the superintendent, you know, should the evaluation process go really well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a proficient ranking normally comes with an increase in salary is, is built into the contract, and then. I think also with that strategic session, do we wanna try and extend the contract? Um, I mean, those are conversations that we can certainly engage in. Thank you for flagging that, Mr. Cruz.
It's not my pleasure.
Yeah, no, that, absolutely right, Manny, on that one.
Okay, anything else? So we've got the sixth, we'll hear from Doctors Reich. Mary, you will forward out the rubric you expect us all to use, the form, so we can.
Yeah.
Uh, make sure that we're not opting rating off different um, different set of rubrics. And then um, they'll be back, do a week after our meeting on the sixth, thirteenth. And with the expectation that we'll report out on the twentieth. And then we'll undertake the joint planning on uh, future evaluation goals. Um, or future goals, I should say, that we would then be looking to evaluate the superintendent on after the first of the year.
Okay. And Jensen's gonna get Matt Killam to.
Fix your computer.
So whatever is going on, okay.
I had an issue earlier today with my laptop that also was plugged into my, all, obviously, all my city work. And um, I had to reboot it, so I would try that first.
Yeah, I know, I take it bigger than that, though, for this.
Okay, got it.
Um, the reboot seems to not, not help anymore. All right, um, well, takes a village to get me on a computer, thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
A motion made by Ms. Manning, seconded by Mr. Cruz, seeing no other business. All those in favor, Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Pangallo?
Yep.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Nuncio?
Yes.
And Mayor Driscoll, yes. Six members voting, six in the affirmative. We stand adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
All right, have a good Thanksgiving.
Oh, look at that. You get a drumstick, all right.
Look at, we got a smile.
Very good. Normally, I'm not like a baby person, but you do have a cutie there.
Thank you, Mary. Bye, everybody. Enjoy the holiday.
You too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Your help early on. Bye-bye.
Bye, Mary.